Can I add an item for potential future agenda items? As seventy.
Are you adding an item for tonight or are you adding an item for future?
For future.
It's gonna not wouldn't go on this agenda, it'll be brought up during the agenda items.
I think that's what he's asking, can they?
Yeah, can I have a line item for future agenda items?
I misunderstood what you were saying.
Okay.
Yes, I'd approve that amendment.
So we have a request to add a number eight to the agenda, which would be future agenda items.
Okay.
Make it eight, number nine now, right?
Corey, do you want to amend your motion?
I said approve that, yeah.
Okay, Mike, second. So we have a motion and a second to the revised agenda, which includes number eight. That says future agenda items, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number five are our also office. Jess was already sworn in on Monday, April ninth. And tonight we have also office that will be administered by Amy. So Amy, go ahead.
Okay.
You could both please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so, Green.
Diane Gorman.
Amy Vaughn.
Who has been duly elected.
Who has been duly elected.
To the Board of Education.
To the Board of Education.
Of the Mozzany School District.
Of the Mozzany School District.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God, so help me God. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, organizational meeting of the board. Under number six, we have elections of our officers. I will ask for nominations for the position of president of the board. At this time, a nomination for president of the board?
I'll make a nomination for Matt Barnes.
And a nomination for Matt Barnes. Are there any other nominations?
I'll make a nomination for Diane.
I make the motion to nominate Diane Gorman.
We have a nomination of Diane. I'll ask if there are any other nominations. Okay, then we will hand out ballots to vote. And I would ask that you vote for Matt Barnes or Diane Gorman. And we called Jess ahead of time and she, we're just gonna take her off the speakerphone. And she's going to give her, and Amy, if you could write down what she says. Jess? Okay, I'll put you back in here.
They don't bring a writing instrument.
Amy, do you want to collect and then count out the?
I got two.
Yeah, that's why.
We're kind of rich on this.
The nominee with the most votes will take over as president. And then we will go through the same process for vice president clerk and treasurer. I shared with the board who has been in the different roles. Because our board policy says that you shouldn't be in that role for more than two years unless the board agrees to it. So we'll take those nominations. And just so you know, like Mike can be the treasurer, he's only been there four years and so on. Okay. We have five for Diane Gorman, two for Matt Barnes, and one for me there.
Wouldn't that have been something?
Okay, so Diane Gorman is our president. Diane, I'll ask you to take over now and go through the same process for vice president clerk and treasurer.
Okay. At this time, I will be looking for a nomination for the board vice president.
I would nominate Corey, can you take?
And I would decline.
I would vote Kelly.
Okay, we have a nominee, do we need a second nomination?
Oh, no.
Nope, okay, so we have a nomination for Kelly Zebra, is there a second? I'm sorry, is there another nomination?
Or nominate Matt Barnes.
Okay, so we also have a nomination for Matt Barnes, are there any other nominations? So at this time, Amy?
Everyone has a pen? We have six for Kelly and two for Matt.
Kelly Zebra is vice president. We are moving on to item sixty, which is the election of the board clerk. This time, I'm looking for nominations for the board clerk.
Do you have any interest, Amy?
Um, not yet.
Okay, I get it, I get it. How about Jess, do you have any interest?
Jess?
I don't mind, I can do that.
Okay, so.
I will nominate Jess though.
Okay. We have a nomination for Jess Naples or board clerk, are there any other nominations? I'll ask the second time, are there any other nominations? Do I have to ask three times? Okay. Congratulations, Jess. You are for clerk. Okay, we will move on to item sixty, which is the election of the board treasurer. This time, I will seek nominations for the board treasurer.
I'm gonna nominate Mike Kaiser.
And we have a nomination for Mike Kaiser.
I'll nominate Matt Barnes.
And we have a nomination for Matt Barnes, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Amy, if you'd be so kind?
See, I've got two, Amy's now Diane.
Both for you.
That's right.
And we have a tie. Both have four. Hold again.
Somebody not voting.
We have eight, Mark's. Mark's doesn't vote.
Oh, Mark's.
Mark.
Mike does a really good job.
Okay, I'll vote for myself this time.
All right, yeah. You're, you're okay.
We're unanimous.
Are they nice or unanimous?
Can be bought off there.
I wonder if the first hand can vote for me and I voted.
I hope we fixed them this time because I voted the same.
We have five for Mike and three for Matt.
I changed it.
Okay, so Mike Kaiser is for the second year, the board treasurer. All right, we're moving on to item sixty, which is the selection of the board committees. And we'll start out with the personnel committee. I believe Kevin and Kelly were the two remaining, which right now they were on it. With Matt, Alice no longer there, would you?
Does the president have to be on at that point?
Yes.
Oh, then he's a rule.
Yeah, so take a look up on the screen, our personnel committee is, oh no, it's to be appointed by the board president.
It usually used to be the vice president that would be on the personnel, if I remember correctly, years ago, years ago.
Whoever, the only, the only requirement is that we have the treasurer's on the finance committee. So we will, Mike, you will be on the finance committee.
I want to lobby for Matt Barnes.
On the finance?
On the finance.
Well, we'll, we'll start with the personnel, so I guess Kevin, do you, would you like to remain on the personnel?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay. Kelly? What do you want to see, some new ones?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm, I'll, I'll pull off so somebody else wants it.
Okay, Jess, Amy, anybody else would like to tip their head on the personnel committee?
I will.
Okay, Jess? So Jess and Amy. Okay, and then Kevin, I will ask if you would chair those then?
Personnel committee, right?
Yep. And then we will move on to the finance committee and, and Mike, if you would chair those again?
Sure.
Anybody wishing to, who was on the finance committee from last?
I was and Carol was.
Okay, do you want to stay on that?
I, I'm really indifferent, I could be on any of them. Mike, if you want me to stay on the finance committee, I can stay there.
You're the recorder still on the pillar.
Okay, and I guess I, I could try something different, I will move on to the finance committee.
Yeah, because I know it, I'll do, I'll do the building.
Okay, so that's Mike, Matt Barnes, and Diane on the finance committee, which leaves the building committee would be Corey.
Kelly.
Kelly and Mark. Between Corey and Kelly, either one of you want to chair that?
I would share.
Okay. And then we move on to the curriculum and standards committee, Kevin, I know you were on it and I was the alternate, do you want to remain?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. And I will still stay as, I'll can show up if you can't show up, you just let me know.
Yep.
If you weren't happy. Is there any, I think we got to three on the curriculum?
We need two.
Two, for sure, okay. Does anybody else between Amy and or Jess, do you want to be on as another alternate in case one of us can't be there?
I would pass.
Okay. Jess?
I can be an alternate, yes.
Okay.
And Jess is alternate.
We are moving on to six F, which is the selection of the season nine board of control member delegate.
I will serve on that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Item G, which is the selection of the WASP representative Kelly.
Maybe Corey would like that.
No chance.
Anybody else?
You are so grounded in that.
That's great, Kelly.
You'll stay with it, okay, thank you.
You know the ins and outs.
Yeah, I know.
It really took me four years to know what you know already.
Well, would you like an alternate, just in case? You don't really want to go for the Milwaukee.
Right, that's it.
Yeah. Well, tell you what, if you don't really want to go, then I'm down there.
Yeah.
Okay, item six H is the approval of the existing signature stamp.
I would second.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second to approve the existing signature stamp, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. And item six I is the approval of the routine banking motion.
I had motion approved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second of the approval of the routine banking motion, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is the discussion and possible decision of the approval of additional resignations, retirees, and or hires. And that was an addition that you just put on, correcting it on.
Friday.
Friday?
Yeah, Friday, Saturday morning. I think there was a, one of you called me, there was a problem with the link on Saturday night. So hopefully everything was. So we have interviewed for and would like to bring forward to you the new district publications coordinator, Heather Barton. Our committee of Cindy, Amy, myself, and Brady are all super excited to have Heather join our team. She is really talented, amazing, so we're pretty excited to recommend her. And we'll look for a motion to approve hiring Heather Barton.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Corey and a second by Mike Kaiser, is there any further discussion?
So what's the role of that position?
We shared that with the board, we shared the roles and responsibilities in a document.
It wasn't in my packet, so I'm looking for advice here.
Sure, when we had Cindy's resignation, then we defined all the roles and responsibilities. I can pull it up if you'd like me to.
I'm confused, how many days, I'm sorry.
Um.
Her contract?
That's me, yeah.
Let me pull up where you have the. We have your computer up, you can scroll through and see that. But when we posted for the position, we went through all of the roles and responsibilities.
Yeah.
And approved that. And then we went through all the roles and responsibilities and our team. Well, I'm gonna just go through this a little bit quickly, okay? I'm gonna just go up, because that was the candidates that we were gonna do, sorry about that. But then what we did as a team is we just sat and we designed the questions based upon the roles and responsibilities. And again, we had myself and we had Cindy and we had our graphics teacher and Amy and Brady, all a part of our interview team. So the job is pretty well defined. In addition to the roles and responsibilities that are outlined, Cindy has also done like an out, a monthly type of tasks. The tasks that are, occur during the month of October, during the month of November, there are some steady things. And we learned when Jamie Prejak retired and somebody took over for her, that that was a really good thing to have. I mean, remember that Cindy has been in this position for thirty years, so. So our committee is recommending that we hire Heather Barton.
Okay, so we do have a motion, we do have a second, is there any other further discussion, Amy?
Well, I just say, Anne, do you know, it's not a full-time position, correct? Because you have your summers off or do they come in working?
You know, when Dolly negotiated that contract, so I just, she's not here tonight, she's at.
I was just wondering, somebody had asked me and I'm like.
It's the amount of hours, I'm not sure what we exactly have.
Point eight five.
Point eight five.
Is there any other discussion?
Has there been any talk of having the graphics arts students do some of the work load at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that, we had a big conversation about that. Graphics arts has picked up an awful lot outside of this now. So for example, just a, a single example is like the graphics arts kids design the Chromebook backgrounds for all the kids now. So I would say some of what was done maybe ten or fifteen years ago with that is kind of morphed into other avenues now. And the graphics arts teacher who was on the committee had stated that right now, a lot of those courses are dual credit courses. So they're so prescribed from what the tech says you have to get through. So the days of being able to kind of form your own, like maybe was the case, you know, ten, fifteen years ago are kind of, are, are kind of over with those high-end graphic classes.
And we spent a considerable time looking at the roles and responsibilities. When Cindy resigned, we looked at all of her roles and responsibilities and determined it's a position we have to have.
Yeah.
It really is, so that's why we posted for it, interviewed for it, and are bringing the recommendation forward to you.
I appreciate the discussion.
And is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the next one is the middle school special education teacher.
So we're bringing forward, this is a tough position to fill, so we're very excited that we have a good candidate. Josh, you want to share anything about?
Yeah, we, this is a position we've struggled to fill for a number of different years. And we got a really good one last year in Kathy Vitale, but she was so good that we moved her into our reading teacher position that we, we brought on board at the middle school. So we had to find someone for this role. So when Nate was interviewing at the high school last week, or two weeks ago now, for his special ed position, I sent Megan Peeler, who works in the EBD program, and Mary Zimmerman to be on that team, just in case there happened to be more than one really good candidate. And it turned out that there were two phenomenal candidates that came and interviewed that day. And, and Nate took the, the best of the best and said if that guy wouldn't have taken the job, he would have taken this girl. So we, I called and talked with Nicole Nicolay and, and asked her if she would be willing to work with us at the middle school. And I know that she had, she had interviewed for the high school, but we wanted her at the middle school based on what I heard from Megan Peeler and from Mary Zimmerman and from Nate. And she accepted and we're really excited to have her. She, she comes with great references, she has a behavioral background, and that's what she'll be working with is emotionally behavior disorder students, so.
No, is Vitale gonna still be the reading specialist?
Yes, yep. Kathy will be in our building, so, which is another positive because Kathy's still there to help Nicole transition into the position.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, motion by Corey, second by Mike Kaiser, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the last is a teacher resignation.
Yep, Mara Johannis, Johansson, I'm sorry, is resigning from her position as a fourth grade teacher at the.
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade. Language arts, I'm sorry.
And I talked with Mara about this, it's something she's been toying with for a little while and I, and I'd asked her if she was serious about it to give me a resignation letter. Because she's, she gave herself some time and she decided she is not going to teach anymore. So she's not leaving us for a different teaching position, she's just decided that she wants to move on with a different career. I wish her good luck.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Corey Tomczek and a second by Mike Kaiser to approve the resignation of Mara Johansson. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. And then the next item would be item eight, which is added for future agenda items.
Maybe the sequence could be better, but I'd like to put on the agenda for our next coming meeting here, a review and possible discussion slash decision for committees that are solely developed. Number one, as a recognized important numbers coming in, understanding the roles and responsibilities of each, maybe that discussion would be worthwhile for them. Maybe they are already familiar with them. But also there may be some opportunities of what they're responsible for to better assist the collaboration within the school district and the administration. So I think that discussion would be worthwhile.
So as like a agenda item for the next board meeting for the entire board, okay?
Yeah, and online, by the way, we have old policies, one eighty-five online versus one fifty-five, so.
From the last board meeting?
No, if you go through the websites and it comes up committees, it comes up one eighty-five versus number one fifty-five. Here in my packet, it's one fifty-five.
So did you want to back, bring back the policy to review as well?
Yeah, policy and review and discussion, possibly decision. I don't know if we want to change things or not, but I thought it would be at least worth talking about. I have some ideas, but I think it needs to be on the agenda to talk more than any careers.
Okay. Is there any other items that anyone would wish to bring up for a future agenda item?
Well, Julie and I are real close to our recognizing the L, aren't we? And I'd like to bring that forward.
I apologize for falling off.
Just as another date, Mike?
Uh, no, I don't update it.
Okay.
It'll be the move it in through acceptance.
Okay.
I had a discussion to also, and I'm not sure how to kind of bring it up. Is possible with, in elementary, we can add another first grade teacher? Some issues that we brought up.
I can share with you how we've made staffing decisions. We're lucky to do that, we've made our staffing decisions based on our budget.
Yeah. And get that together and kind of.
Update on, yeah, update on staffing decisions for the.
And just want the board to know, because they might be getting some.
That was in our personnel committee last, not last month, the month before, when he requested what the class sizes were gonna be and went through what our staffing would be and our ration. That was in our personnel committee last, not last month, the month before, when he requested what the class sizes were gonna be and went through what our staffing would be and our rationale. Do you want that, so we've already, I mean, we've.
Well, there's some concerns, so, about, and then I don't know if they, if we, if we have it on the agenda, if then they can come speak or what they wanna do.
Okay, we can have it on again, we.
Yeah, I might be getting letters, so it's like.
Do we have the discussion personnel committee or?
I'm not gonna be on the personnel committee, so.
So full board?
Probably, yeah, just bring, I'd just like the full board to hear like what we all know. I'm gonna keep it that way. No, Mike, I'm told, you know, we're dealing with what's out there.
Um, is there anything else? Okay, otherwise we go on to item number nine.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly Zbro and a second by Matt Barnes to adjourn, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries, there adjourn. Your.
I'm sorry, hello, how are you?
I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy to be here, I just love it. Yeah, I like, I, I just want the, the, the peckling cohort here, I'm glad to see that you're, you're in balance, good, take care.
Good day, Mr. Tomczak.
Always do.
And that's your computer.
That is my.
Computer?
You know, it's all the same, yeah, but your email is your user and password is that one, when you go to your email that. Everything, everything runs through that one.
I'll open that up, yeah.
It's like Christmas in April.
Okay, thank you.
No, I didn't go this far, I, no, gosh, that would be asking a lot, right? Get my questions answered.
Sure.
I set my questions along with fire, the high school secretary and Darlene, anything I had, I figured they can, they can get things figured out. But you didn't get to go there yourself. Oh, you did. It was pretty great, my wife and I took our kids down to the car and if you want, and I was there for five minutes and I said, I got a dorm pack, we gotta call because.